Good evening. It is September thirteen thirty-six. I want to call to order the December twelfth meeting of the Norwalk Common Committee. If there will rise and zoom, the pleasure relates to our motion. But the leaders to the back of the United States. And to the bottom, for which he stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, and justice. Dixon, please go.
Mr. Burnett.
Present.
Mr. Goldstein.
Here.
Mr. Lopez.
Here.
Ms. Najolski-Eichner.
Present.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
Ms. Ayers.
Present.
Mr. Seed.
Present.
Mr. Wiggins.
Here.
Ms. Young.
Here.
Ms. McMur.
Present.
Ms. Murray.
Here.
Ms. Dunn.
Yeah.
Mr. Sutton.
Present.
Mr. Frayer.
Here.
Ms. Shanahan.
Here.
Fifteen, we have a forum.
At fifteen, we have a quorum. Next first item on the agenda is acceptance of the minutes of the regular meeting of November twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-three. Do I have a motion? Ms. Smith, are there any corrections, deletions, omissions? Seeing none, all in favor of the minutes as submitted. Unanimous, thank you. Any opposition? Any abstentions? Next item is approval of the minutes of the special meeting of December second, two thousand twenty-three. Do I have a motion? Mr. Burnett, are there any corrections, deletions, or omissions? Ms. Najolski-Eichner.
Thank you so much, Mayor. On page three of those minutes, under four appointment of committees, there are, I believe, a couple of misspellings and inconsistencies in the names of our council members. I just want to flag them for correction. In particular, I noticed that Mr. Seed is James instead of Jalen. And I believe some council members have first names and others do not, so consistency would be helpful. Thank you.
Any other corrections, or deletions, or omissions? All in favor of the minutes as corrected. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We now have public participation. Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to address the council? No sign up?
No sign up.
All right. Ms. James, is there anybody online or in Zoom that wants to? Okay. Have her unmute herself, please.
Good evening. It just takes a little while for the being promoted to panelist. I'll start my video. I'm gonna try. There you go. All right. Good evening. For the record, my name is Diane Lauricella. I'm not sure why it is yellow. It looks like forest fires of the past months on my, on my computer. Tonight I have a few items on the agenda. I just wanted to ask a question and make comment. I'm going to start at the end. Section seven, item nine A and B relating to the Dog Pound. When I saw the price tag of a quarter million dollars, I unfortunately did not have time to listen to the recording of the Recreation and Parks, I'm sorry, of the Land Use and Building Management Committee's discussion. But I do recall, in a time when even, I think, Rick McQuade was a council member, there had been a major renovation and rebuilding of the Dog Pound. So if there's any chance that, and also I would like to make sure that if there is a structure that you decide to spend a quarter million dollars on, that it is run by renewable energy. There would be no excuse for it not to, in my opinion. Number seven, section seven, item seven of Land Use and Building Management, ninety-eight South Main Street. I know you're gonna, it's terrific that we've identified money from D E C D. However, I don't think that that should be a part of the plan unless and until renewable energy is utilized to, to power up and heat and cool this particular building. I have been on record for years trying and begging to have that be part of the plan. Item C, under Public Works, for the two plow trucks. Now, I, I hope that the committee looked at the sole, the reason why we continue to look at sole source proprietors, but at the very least, did anyone look to see whether electric vehicles? The plow trucks now could be hybrid or electric. It is on the market, and I wanted just to know if someone had even looked at that opportunity. And lastly, I save the, for last, is your listed items of appointments. I first wanted to look at the Planning and Zoning Regular Member Appointment, Mr. Chapin. I don't know if this is a typo, but I noticed that he was listed as a, to represent District A, but he lives in District E on Maywood. And I wanted to know, had the two District A council people been given the chance to put up a name for regular member of the zoning commission? Mr. Chapin is currently an alternate, and he, I've enjoyed his comments. This has nothing to do with him. It has to do with making sure all of our districts are equitably and properly represented. Lastly, and I'm not sure what the status of this is, but I have sent an email that I sent to Ms. Dixon earlier this evening or late afternoon, that you consider removing Jane Reedy as a member to be reappointed from the B A A with member, with the reason relating to the appearance of impropriety or the appearance of special treatment. So I ask that you consider that. Please remove her and do an investigation, and I think we'll be able to go forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other person? Did you sign in?
No, sorry.
Yep, you can sign in on the sheet up there. And for the record, if you could please state your name and address?
Sure thing. My name is Chapin Bryce. My address is sixteen East Avenue, Norwalk, Connecticut. So I just wanted to come up and speak because I saw on the agenda that my address was represented incorrectly. I'm in fact in District A at sixteen East Ave. So that's, that's all. Thank you, Ms. Lauricella, for raising that concern.
Thank you. You want to come in and sign up? Sign up on the sign-in sheet? If you please state your name and address for the record, please?
Julian Moore, fifteen Madison Street, Norwalk, Connecticut. So I'm here tonight to just shed a little light on the, I don't believe, G one line, G one on the nonprofit status of funding. I just wanted to come tonight just to actually show my face. Longtime resident of Norwalk, Connecticut. I do run a nonprofit for young ladies called Wild Trap that services young ladies here in Norwalk, Bridgeport, and Stamford, Connecticut. I'm here about the funding, how it gets dispersed. I just want to, you know, share that, you know, there are minority nonprofits here that we are doing our best.
Is, is there an item on the agenda that you're speaking about?
Yeah, line G, line one. For the funding. That I, I saw where, like, Norwalk adds get funding. You know, and I, I feel like, you know, I have noticed a few other, as well as, like, the Carver. I just came tonight just to, you know, address the fact that I think some of us get overlooked for funding or get denied funding. And we have no idea, well, I don't, as CEO of the nonprofit, to why, when funding come in, such of that nature, that how come it does not get dispersed for the criteria, what are the criteria to receive funding? You know, because it, it, I just feel like it's unbalanced to where certain things we, criteria, we have to go through to get funded and get denied compared to other nonprofits who get funded just as, as fast. So I want to come tonight to find out what is the actual criteria of getting funded for our programs without being denied every time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think this gentleman is also looking to speak. If you would sign in?
Good evening. My name is Tristan Fields. My address is nine Murray Street, zip code zero six eight five one. Similarly to the young woman who spoke before me, I had a question about line item G one, in terms of extending that, that funding to the organization. Just, I also run an organization here in Norwalk called Help that helps students prepare for college through SAT prep and college tours and one-on-one counseling. So just looking for opportunities and trying to figure out what the criteria was, if there was, like, some sort of funding call for this, or, or a call for proposals, and like, how we can make sure that organizations like mine and Wild Trap can be considered in. So I just had a question on like, how that decision was made and what opportunities are upcoming so we can make sure that we're working together to support our neediest citizens.
Thank you. Is there anybody else online that wishes to speak on an item on the agenda? And then we will close public session. That brings us to resignations and appointments. First is a resignation of Bryce Chapin from the Planning and Zoning Alternate. Now we have appointments to the Board of Assessment Appeals. For Ashley Patritis, do I have a motion? Mr. Frayer?
Ashley is a licensed Realtor. She's lived, she's worked for William Ravis since two thousand fourteen. She's being put up for alternate on the Board of Assessment Appeals. She's worked on both sides of the buyer and seller markets in, in her office, and she's also been very active in, in teaching and mentoring new agents in the agency. And she's very experienced in that. She's been annually running about sixty-eight million dollars in sales every year. I think particularly in the, in the current environment where we're going through evaluations, she'll be an excellent addition to the, to the, to the board.
Thank you. Any further comments or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Next, we have Frank Erlich for appointment to the Board of Health. The Dr. Frank Erlich. Ms. Smith?
Yes, thank you. I would like to move the appointment of Dr. Erlich to the Board of Health. Dr. Erlich has extensive, extensive experience in the health field, heading up numerous hospitals throughout the Northeast, and will be a great addition to the Board of Health, and I support his nomination.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Next, we have Jessica Edward, Commission on the Status of Women. Do I have a motion? Ms. Young?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move Ms. Jessica Edwards forward for the Commission on the Status of Women. I've had the pleasure of knowing Ms. Edwards for some time now, and I'm just impressed with what she has accomplished. She owns her own business that deals with, with seniors, and I, I think she will be a great addition to the Status of Women, the Commission on the Status of Women. I'm just excited that we're able to get some younger ideas to the table. And so I think as a council, that is one of the things that we should strive to do, is to make sure that we engage our young community. So I'm pleased that we're moving her forward.
And she's a recent small business owner, twenty-five Van Zant Street, and I'm quite impressed with her.
She actually did part in the Kiva program and was able to build her own business. And so, who knows to her?
Any further discussion or comment? Mr. Goldstein?
I just want to add, I found Jessica to be remarkably conscientious and caring and deeply intelligent and someone who honestly inspires me. And I find her, I was at the recent Celebration of Innovations Program recipients with Jessica, but Jessica's business, I think, received the highest amount of any applicant. And she's just someone who's an outstanding member of this community, and no doubt will do a wonderful job on the Commission for the Status of Women.
Further comment or discussion? She has more energy than anybody. Okay, seeing no further comment, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Now we have Mr. Robert Riley, Rowley, appointing to the Pension Board. Do I have a motion?
I have a motion.
Mr. Frayer?
I've known Bob Rowley for a number of years now. He's probably one of the most dynamic people. He's diverse background, I might say, eclectic background. We'll make him an excellent asset to the Pension Board. Just briefly, his background is that he started his career as a psychologist. And by picking up different elements of behavioral science, he then turned that into being one of the pioneers of AI systems, working for Sperry. Very successful at that, and not satisfied with just getting into the beginnings of AI and, and psychological behavioral experience. He then capitalized all those saving, all those, that experience he did have, and he moved into the world of media, including TV, marketing, consumer research, and so forth. I, I think that Bob, wherever he is, he's, he's, he's seeks the, to understand and, and really fully understand the interaction of personal traits, innovation techniques, tactics, and outcomes that they achieve. I think somebody like, with his background will be excellent for our pension.
Any further comment or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Now, we have Bryce Chapin. I'm sorry, Bryce?
His first name is Chapin.
I'm sorry? Yeah, okay. Bryce Chapin. Oh, Chapin Bryce, that's Bryce's last name. Okay. All the others have first names first. So Chapin Bryce, Planning and Zoning Commission Regular. Do I have a motion? Mr. Goldstein?
Yes, I'd like to make a move for Chapin Bryce to be appointed as a regular member of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Chapin, I think, was appointed to the Planning and Zoning Commission, I think, a little less than a year ago. I think pretty much at the beginning of this year. And in speaking with his colleagues about how he's done, they really give glowing reviews. He's someone who's diligent and caring and gives real time and effort to, to the work and asks very thoughtful questions. He is a, an engineer by training and is someone who, as I have heard, has really hit the ground running and in knowing him personally, have no doubt that he will make really wonderful contributions or continue to make wonderful contributions to the Planning and Zoning Commission this time as a regular member.
Thank you. Any further comment or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Now we have reappointments. The first one would be Ms. Doris Ash, Board of Assessment Appeals Regular. Do I have a motion? Mr. Juleski-Eichner?
Thank you. So I'm happy to move the reappointment of Doris Ash, who was a longtime Realtor in Norwalk, as well as a teacher in Stamford, and brings substantial expertise in the real estate market here in Norwalk. And so we really appreciate her service, given that this is a year of reassessment. I'm sure that she will be doing her volunteer work.
Thank you. Any further comment or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Now we have one, two, three, four, five, six reappointments to the Board of Assessment Appeals Alternate. We have Megan Douglas Reedy, Susan Dunlap, Josephine Dupree, Judith Hires, Harriet Patritis, and Jane Reedy. If there's no objection, we'll move them as a group. Do I have a motion? Mr. Juleski-Eichner?
Thank you. So again, it's my gratitude to appreciate this group of experienced real estate professionals who are volunteering to serve as alternates on the Board of Assessment Appeals. And we really do appreciate people who have this expertise stepping up to share their time with the city.
Thank you. Further comment? Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Ms. Dunn is opposed, and there's other, everybody else voted in favor.
Okay.
Next, we have Mr. Norman Weinberger, Dr. Norman Weinberger, appointment to the Board of Health. Do I have a motion? Mr. Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move Dr. Weinberger's name for reappointment to the Board of Health. Dr. Weinberger has been a trusted member of the Board of Health for several years. He currently serves the medical advisor for Norwalk and Westport Public Schools. There's several years of experience and best practices will be, continue to be a great value add to the Board of Health. So we're fortunate to have him on the board, and I fully support his reappointment.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. We have three of the Zoning Commission Regular Appointments, or reappointments. Nick Kanter, Galen Wells, and Hector Patches. If you can have a motion? Mr. Goldstein?
Yeah, I'd like to, I don't know why I keep wanting to say I like the motion, which is not as exciting, to support the reappointment of Nick Kanter, Galen Wells, Hector Patches as regular members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, just a little on each of them. Nick, and having served on the Planning and Zoning Commission with Nick and Galen, I found both of them to be remarkably conscientious. Nick is someone who we have, I know many of us have talked to about redevelopment and really thinking about how to do really sustainable development in Norwalk. He's absolutely the leader on that, on that score, and is just a really good guy to boot. And Galen Wells is someone who I think a lot of us know, and is someone who is conscientious and deeply analytical minded, and someone who I think is very good at seeing through the heart of a lot of challenging engineering and legal issues, and someone who I've served with on the Planning and Zoning Commission, who I deeply valued. And Hector is someone who is newer to the Planning and Zoning Commission, but has been on PMZ, I think, for at least a year now, and is someone who has provided a new and refreshing perspective to that, to that commission, and is someone who has a small business owner here in the community, and who is a really valued force. So I enthusiastically support all three of these donations.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mr. Seed?
I'm just wanting to, to highlight, we are proud in District A that we do have Hector being reappointed, but we also have Darius Williams. We do have two strong advocates. He's not being reappointed, but just for clarification, we do have two strong voices from District A on planning and zoning. On that, we are proud of, and proud to.
Ms. Ayers? Oh, I thought you raised your hand.
Oh, no, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Any further comment or discussion? Ms. Dunn?
With my, having a lot of meetings, especially on Zoom lately, I wholeheartedly would repoint Nick and Hector. I, for non-personal reasons, based on performance, I would not vote for Galen Wells.
Further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Okay, that does the appointments and reappointments. Under Mayor's remarks, I just have a few. Tomorrow night, we have at five PM a menorah lighting at Norwalk City Hall, right here on the front lawn, near the Christmas tree. We're hosting our menorah lighting ceremony with Rabbi Hecht of Beth Israel Chabad to celebrate the seventh night of Hanukkah. We had a menorah lighting tonight at fifty Washington Street, and this will be our third menorah lighting. I think I've had, oh, six or seven Christmas tree lighting, so we have a lot of lighting going on. Pancake breakfast with Frosty. This Saturday, we're inviting residents to join the city of Norwalk for a pancake breakfast, breakfast with Frosty the Snowman in our community room from eight-thirty to ten AM. It'd be a wonderful opportunity for children to take photos with Frosty the Snowman while enjoying wonderful pancakes. We all like pancakes. We are having on December twenty-ninth at five PM, thank you Darlene Young for helping to organize this event. We're having, invite the community to help us celebrate Hanza in the community room. I think last year, was it, we had that group come in. It was absolutely entertaining and just absolutely wonderful event. I'm sorry? Very good. And last but not least, we're looking for people, hopefully, especially Norwalk residents, to take the firefighter exam on Saturday, January thirteenth. We're holding an entry-level exam. Registration for the exam closes on Sunday, December thirty-first. Applicants must be eighteen years of age, and the city encourages candidates of all cultures and backgrounds to apply to join the ranks of our brave Norwalk Fire Department. And we, like I say, we encourage people from the city of Norwalk to apply. That is all my comment, and now I'll turn it over to the council president, Ms. Young.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're, we're, we're going to move on to the common council committees, and reading the consent calendar for this evening is council member Nicole Ayers.
Thank you, Madam President. Item number seven, A, Public Safety and General Government Committee. Authorize the mayor, Harry W. Relling, to execute any and all documents, instruments, and amendments thereto, as may be necessary, to apply for and accept grant funding for the twenty-twenty-four CT Department of Transportation DUI enforcement grant in the amount up to ninety thousand dollars pursuant to such grant funding. Two, authorize the police chief, James Wass, to execute any and all documents, instruments, and amendments thereto, as may be necessary, to apply for and accept grant funding from the twenty-twenty-four Connecticut Department of Transportation DUI enforcement grant in the amount up to ninety thousand dollars pursuant to such grant funding. Three, authorize the purchasing agent to issue purchase order to Firematic Supply Company in Yapi, Yapi, New York, for the, for the purchase of one rescue apparatus from HGAC-BUY contract F S F S one-nine V D one-three for a sum not to exceed one million, three hundred and ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and fourteen dollars. Account noted. Authorize the purchasing agent to issue purchase order to Freightliner of Hartford, East Hartford, Connecticut, for the purchase of one rescue support truck from Connecticut, Pitt State Contract Number One Four P S X zero-two-three-nine for a sum not to exceed one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, five hundred and forty-six dollars. Account noted. B, Recreation Parks and Cultural Affairs Committee, one A, Technical Corrections. Account year changed from twenty-twenty-three to twenty-twenty-four. Authorize the mayor, Harry W. Relling, to enter into contract with Hindington's LLC, project number four-three-zero-five, tennis pickle, pickleball and basketball court renovation for an amount not to exceed seven hundred and eighty thousand, nine hundred and ninety-four dollars. Account noted. One B, one C, excuse me. Authorize the mayor, Harry W. Relling, to issue an amendment to the contract with Hindington's LLC, tennis pickleball and basketball court renovation for additional request items in an amount not to exceed forty, forty-three thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars. Account noted. Two, authorize the director of Recreation and Parks to issue change orders to Hindington's LLC, project number four-three-zero-five, tennis pickleball and basketball court renovation, an amount not to exceed seventy-one thousand, eight hundred dollars. Account noted. in amount not to exceed $71,800. Account noted. Accounts noted. Technical correction, addition of an account. Authorize the mayor Harry W. Relling to execute an agreement with TD &amp; Sons Inc. for the project RNP221-1. Brian McMahon Athletic Field conversion for a sum not to exceed $868,065. Base bid, $288,780. Alternate, 1-dash spotlighting. $77,000. Alternate dash 3 protective net. Accounts noted. C, Public Works Committee. One, authorize the mayor Harry W. Relling to execute any and all documents necessary to accept a 63-square-foot sidewalk and 281-square-foot roadway easement located at 32 Ninth Street. A 3-430-square-foot sidewalk and 179-square-foot road in easement located at 41 Ninth Street. And a 75-square-foot sidewalk and a 2-square-foot roadway easement located at 22 North Street in connection with planning and zoning application number 2022-28. Camps-R-39 Ninth Street, Property LLC, 39, 32 Ninth Street. Two, authorize the purchasing agent to authorize the sole source purchase order to Gabrielli Truck Sales for the purchase of 1 2025 Mack GR42F plow truck for a sum not to exceed $305,670.10. Account noted. Three, authorize the purchasing agent to authorize a sole source purchase order to Freightliner of Hartford for the purchase of 1 2024 M2106 plus plow truck for a sum not to exceed $197,41.10. Account noted. Four, authorize the mayor Harry W. Relling to execute the First Amendment to the October 24, 2023 agreement between the city of Norwalk and Colonial Machinery Concrete and Asphalt Painting LLC for Project TMP 2023-3 Concrete Curve and Sidewalk on Lloyd and Avenue for a sum not to exceed $170,000. Account noted. Technical correction of the Common Council action of July 12, 2022. Item Roman numeral 7 dot B dot 3 for an on-call agreement between the city of Norwalk and Elmstead Tree and Truck Care Company LLC and Minuteman Land Services LLC for the supply and planting of trees and trucks. Task order not to exceed $700,000 in aggregate between the two companies. Added accounts designated for the Norwalk Tree account. Account number 380000-4804 and account numbers 380000-5700. Accounts noted. Six, authorize the mayor Harry W. Relling to execute the First Amendment to the April 12, 2021 agreement for the household hazardous waste collection between the city of Norwalk and Clean Harbors Environmental Services, Inc. Project 4079 for an amount not to exceed $64.90 per household and $39 per half-household. Account noted. 7A, authorize the mayor Harry W. Relling to execute the agreement between the city of Norwalk and M. Rodano, Inc. for a project DRG223-3 On Call Drainage Improvement at various locations for a sum not to exceed $1,020,60. $20,060 with an option to extend for two additional terms for one year each. Accounts noted. 7B, authorize the chief of operations and public works to execute orders on the contract between the city of Norwalk and M. Rodano, Inc. for project DRG2023-3 On Call Drainage Improvement at improvement at various locations for a sum not to exceed $102,600. Accounts noted. Eight, authorize the mayor Harry W. Relling to execute an agreement between the city of Norwalk and Al Engineers, Inc. for a project PSC2023-1 On Call Surveying and Mapping Services in connection with various projects for the city of Norwalk. The agreement is for a period of one year at a sum not to exceed $200,000 with an option to extend for two additional terms for one year each. Accounts noted. D, Land Use and Building Management Committee. Eight. Authorize the mayor Harry W. Relling to execute an agreement with Downs Construction Company LLC as the construction manager for the Cranberry Park Galloner Mansion Improvement Project. Terms of the agreement shall include pre-construction services, $49,300. C F X fees, 2.5%, C M contingency, 5% balance converted to the city at project completion. General conditions fee, $581,539. Actual amount to be determined at the time of the GMP. Subsequent to trade contractors bidding, final GMP amendments will be submitted to the common council for approval. Funds for this agreement are available for the state DECD grant. Account noted. E, Economic and Community Development Committee. Two, authorize the mayor Harry W. Relling to execute an agreement between the city of Norwalk and the Connecticut Department of Transportation, CT DOT, to receive $800,000 in 2023 Community Connectivity Grant construction funding related to the Hospital Hill Village Safe Enforcement Enhancements. F, Financial Claims Committee. One, approve the allocation of $3,232,918 as special capital appropriations funds for the city's 40% share of the project cost in compliance with state HVAC grant application requirements for Brian McMahon High School HVAC Improvement Project. This special capital appropriation shall be funded through $3,320,918 of authorized but uninsured general obligation bonds or notes of the city. Two, approve the allocation of $1,330,900 in special capital appropriations for funds for the city, 40% share of the project cost in compliance with state HVAC grant application requirement for Brookside Elementary School HVAC Improvement Project. This special capital appropriation shall be funded through $1,330,900 of authorized but uninsured general obligation bond or notes of the city. Three, approve the allocation of $1,650,850 in special capital appropriations funds for the city's 40% share of the project cost in compliance with state HVAC grant application requirements for Marvin Elementary School HVAC Improvement Project. This special capital appropriation shall be funded through $1,650,850 of the authorized but uninsured general obligation bond or notes of the city. Four, approve the allocation of $1,210,206 in special capital appropriation funds for the city, 40% share of project cost in compliance with state HVAC grant application requirements for Silvermine Elementary School HVAC Improvement Project. This special capital appropriation shall be funded through $1,210,206 of authorized but uninsured general obligation bonds or notes of the city. Five, approve the allocation of $4,600,263,447 in special capital appropriations fund for the city, 40% share of the project cost in compliance with state HVAC grant application requirements for Rowayton Elementary School HVAC Improvement Project. The special capital appropriation shall be funded through $4,663,447 of authorized but uninsured general obligation bonds or notes of the city. Six, approve the allocation of $2,584,750 in special capital appropriations funds for the city's 40% share of the project cost in compliance with state HVAC grant application requirement for Narimac Elementary School HVAC Improvement Project. This special capital appropriation shall be funded through $2,586,750 of authorized but uninsured general obligation bonds or notes of the city. Thus ends the reading of the consent calendar.
Need a drink of water now? You need some water now?
Got it.
I gotta stop.
So you've heard the consent calendar as read by council member Ayers. Fall to vote on that. Signify, all in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Is that unanimous? Are you raising your hand?
Very good, thank you. Now we go to Land Use and Building Management Committee, I believe. Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Number one, resolved that the Norwalk Common Council authorizes the Norwalk Board of Education to apply to the Commissioner of Administrative Services and to accept or reject a grant for the HVAC IAQ grant at the Brian McMahon High School. Resolved that the Land Use and Building Management Committee of the Norwalk Common Council is hereby established as the building committee about the HVAC IAQ grant at the Brian McMahon High School. Resolved that Norwalk Common Council authorizes at least the preparation of schematic drawings and outline specifications for the HVAC IAQ grant at Brian McMahon High School. Two, resolved that the common council-
You want to move them all together?
Yes, I'm gonna put them together. Uh, resolved that the Norwalk Common Council authorizes the Norwalk Board of Education to apply to the Commissioner of Administrative Services and to accept or reject a grant for the HVAC IAQ grant at Brookside Elementary School. Resolved that the Land Use and Building Management Committee of Norwalk Common Council is hereby established as the building committee about the HVAC IAQ grant at the Brookside Elementary School. Resolved that the Norwalk Common Council authorizes at least the preparation of schematic drawings and outline specifications for the HVAC IAQ grant at the Brookside Elementary School. Three, I'll be moving through item six, Mayor. Um, three, resolved that the Norwalk Common Council authorizes the Norwalk Board of Education to apply to the Commissioner of Administrative Services and to accept or reject a grant for the HVAC IAQ grant at the Marvin Elementary School. Resolved that the Land Use and Building Management Committee of the Norwalk Common Council is hereby established as the building committee about the HVAC IAQ grant at Marvin Elementary School. Resolved that the Norwalk Common Council authorizes at least the preparation of schematic drawings and outline specifications for the HVAC IAQ grant at Marvin Elementary School. Four, resolved that the Norwalk Common Council authorizes the Norwalk Board of Education to apply for the, to the Commissioner of Administrative Services and to accept or reject a grant for the HVAC IAQ grant at Silvermine Elementary School. Resolved that the Land Use and Building Management Committee of the Norwalk Common Council is hereby established as the building committee about the HVAC IAQ grant at the Silvermine Elementary School. Resolved that the Norwalk Common Council authorizes at least the preparation of schematic drawings and outline specifications for the HVAC IAQ grant at Silvermine Elementary School. Five, resolved that the Norwalk Common Council authorizes the Norwalk Board of Education to apply to the Commissioner of Administrative Services and to accept or reject a grant for the HVAC IAQ grant at Narimac Elementary School. Resolved that the Land Use and Building Management Committee of Norwalk Common Council is hereby established as the building committee about the HVAC IAQ grant at Narimac Elementary School. Resolved that the Norwalk Common Council authorizes at least the preparation of schematic drawings and outline specifications for the HVAC IAQ grant at Narimac Elementary School. Six, resolved that the Norwalk Common Council authorizes the Board of, Norwalk Board of Education to apply to the Commissioner of Administrative Services to accept or reject a grant for the HVAC IAQ grant at the Rowayton Elementary School. Resolved that the Land Use and Building Management Committee of Norwalk Common Council is hereby established as the building committee about the HVAC IAQ grant at the Rowayton Elementary School. Resolved that the Norwalk Common Council authorizes at least the preparation of schematic drawings and outline specifications for the HVAC IAQ grant at the Rowayton Elementary School. I would like to move those items and say a few words if I may.
You have the floor.
So we are aware that Norwalk Public Schools has been working diligently to, to increase HVAC in all of our schools. It's an expensive process, and the state does not normally reimburse for HVAC work. We do want to see all of our schools air-conditioned. And so with this grant, the state of Connecticut is allowing cities and towns to apply for grants. It's a special legislation by the state to apply for these grants at their current reimbursement. And for us, that's 60%. So this is an extraordinary opportunity to get our schools air-conditioned. So the, our building department with Alan Lowe and Norwalk Public Schools have worked together to prioritize the schools that will need to be done regardless. And so this allows for us to apply for these grants, and through the Finance and Claims Committee, as was read and we approved on the, in the consent calendar, $14,360,300 and $306 will be set aside in special appropriations to meet our 40%. If we do not receive the grants, if Norwalk Public Schools does not receive the grants, the funds will not be spent, but these schools were prioritized. And so we have Alan Lowe here to speak on behalf, you know, about this project and to answer any questions anyone has.
Anybody have any questions to ask of Mr. Lowe?
I don't have a question.
Ms. Nagelsi Eichner?
Um, so I just want to extend my thanks to Alan Lowe and to these, uh, building and facilities folks at the school. For pulling this together, as someone whose child was unable to attend school for several days in September due to the heat. I'm really grateful to everyone for prioritizing this project. I'm really grateful to the state for offering this opportunity. As you see, even at a 40% reimbursement, these are very expensive projects. And so we really appreciate the state for recognizing the importance of getting our students, sorry, even at 60% reimbursement for us, 40% for us to have to pay for it, they're very expensive. And so I'm very grateful to the state and everyone who worked hard at the state level to get these reimbursements available for our students, you know, as climate change hits us harder and harder. These, this will happen more and more to our students if we don't have this kind of HVAC system. So thank you to everyone's work on this.
Further comment or questions for Mr. Lowe? Mr. Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just quickly, I just wanted to mention, you know, this, this work is covering six schools. There's still several schools that have work that needs to be done, and those schools will not be forgotten. We, we will look at alternate ways to address those schools, so just wanted to create some level of comfort that this is the beginning and not the end, and we will continue to look at the schools that are not on this list to have HVAC work completed as well.
Thank you. Further questions or comment? Ms. Nagelsi Eichner?
Just to piggyback on Mr. Burnett's comments, I also did want to thank everyone who has appropriated money for the schools that were already done. So again, I want parents to understand this is a process. We have been engaged in, schools have been done over the last several years. And so it is very much, there's a, there's a method to the, the work here, and I really am grateful to everyone who is also, has worked on getting them funded in prior years, so we can move through that.
Any questions or comment? Ms. Jen McMur?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to reiterate what some of my colleagues have said and add to that. I think this shows our commitment to really addressing the HVAC issues that we've had in some of the schools and moving our schools into the 21st century if they haven't been already. And I really appreciate this on behalf of the staff and the students. You know, even the schools that have HVAC systems in them, you know, some of them are antiquated. And so we're working very hard in whatever way we can to improve those. And I just want to show that, that we are listening to the parents, we are listening to the concerns of the students and the staff, and we are working on that diligently, and I thank everyone for taking part in that. So thank you.
Further comments or discussion? Questions? I, I want to thank Alan Lowe for working so hard on this. You know, it's been a long time that we've been talking about air conditioning for the schools, and I can't imagine how uncomfortable it is sitting in a school at the end of June or the middle of June, and it's 85 degrees outside, and there's no air conditioning. So this is something that's been coming for a long time. I want to thank our council. I want to thank all the people that are working to make this happen. It's finally happening because they've been talking about it for 25 years. And now we're finally getting this done. So this is really a great program, and I hope that we get all the grants that we've, that the Board of Education is going to be applying for. Thank you. So seeing no more comments or questions, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Item seven, approve following actions. Item seven, approve following actions required for the DECD grant for the proposed Norwalk Community Recreation Center at ninety-eight South Main Street. Whereas the state of Connecticut, through the Department of Economic and Community Development, is authorized to extend financial assistance to the city of Norwalk for the development of the proposed Norwalk Community Recreation Center at ninety-eight South Main Street. And whereas it is desirable and in the public interest that the city of Norwalk make an application to the state of one million, two hundred thousand dollars in order to undertake the Norwalk Community Recreation Center Development Project. Now therefore be it resolved by the common council of the city of Norwalk, one, that it is cognizant of the condition and prerequisites for the state financial assistance imposed by the state of Connecticut, Department of Economic and Community Development, DECD. And two, that the filing of an application for state financial assistance by the city of Norwalk in an amount not to exceed one million, two hundred thousand dollars is approved. And three, that Harry W. Rilling, Mayor, City of Norwalk, is authorized to execute and file such application with the Connecticut Department of Economic Development, DECD, to provide such additional information to execute such other documents as may be required to execute an assistance agreement with the state of Connecticut for financial assistance if such an agreement is offered, to execute any amendments, decision and revisions thereto, and to act as the authorized representative of the city of Norwalk, including all documents relating to the implementation of the project. I would like to move that item and again say a few words.
You have the floor.
Um, yes. So, uh, while we are, the action here is essentially executing this grant. Um, I thought that we would want to highlight the, uh, the south, the Norwalk Community Recreation Center. Um, this has been a project that we have seen great hope and great disappointment. And now we are finally moving forward with a project that will benefit the community. Um, and so I'd just like to turn it over to Alan Lowe to discuss the project and, uh, give us some details about it.
Ms. Shaw?
Um, good evening, I'm a member of the council. Uh, I'm Alan Lowe. Um, yeah, this project has been going on for a number of years. The, the city got this property back, uh, partially, uh, from, uh, South Norwalk Community Center, probably back in two thousand fifteen or so. And since then, we've been, we, we issue RFP, uh, and, um, and we received one proposal, but through the years, we tried to make it work and it didn't work out for a number of different reasons. And, and I didn't want to go too much into that, but, um, finally last year, uh, the city came up the, the idea to do a, uh, Norwalk Community Recreation Center. And from then, we, we kind of be assembling money, funds for this project. Right now, we have four sources of funding. One is for offer funding, about five point seven million, five point four million dollars, I believe. Uh, there's one point two million dollar number other city account. And also there's, um, one point two coming from the DECD grant and about one point seven to two million dollars coming from HUD, which is a federal funding. Uh, so we're putting this funding package together and we have done some very initial cost estimates and design. Uh, we didn't hire an architect, we're the pro bono services. So those, those design and numbers are still where preliminary. Uh, based on those number, um, we are projecting that we will probably need around, uh, two point five million dollars more. So that's being requested by, uh, Recreation Department as part of the upcoming capital budget process. Uh, the, the building basically is about twenty-two thousand square feet. Uh, the proposal is to kind of renovate the building, to put a new facade in the front and also add a gym, gymnasium in the back of the building. Such, uh, in the back of the building, the pop, uh, portion of Ryan past, the contaminated soil. Or let me change that. It's actually not contaminated, it's actually polluted soil. That's how it's defined. Um, so there will be some remedial, additional remediation costs, uh, capping and all that stuff that needs to be done. So again, we are projecting the total project is going to be ten, uh, twelve and a, I think a twelve and a half million dollars or so, I think it is, I forgot. In any event, uh, so this project has a very expedited, expedited timeline. The reason being the offer funding has a requirement to be contracted for services by end of, uh, by December two thousand twenty-four. So we are right now, in fact, tomorrow, we are doing interview with the architects. Um, and then right after that, uh, that we submit to a common, uh, land use committee and common council for approval in January. At the same time, we'll be looking to issue our people, construction manager, to do a cost estimating, uh, and, and to prove it. And then they're after the springtime to summertime, we go to the design services and repair construction documents that go out to bid in September next year. After we get the bits back, we'll have to go for a common council and, and, um, well, the final approval or contract, uh, so then we'd be in time for, for commitment of funds before December next year. Uh, the construction will probably take around, which projected will probably take around fourteen months or so. So I think, if I get this correctly, uh, two thousand, spring of two thousand twenty-six, I believe, uh, would be our projected opening day, if I'm not mistaken by math. I think that's a quick summary where, where we've been, where we, what we're doing right now, where we're going in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lowe. Any questions for Mr. Lowe? Ms. McMur?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have any questions. I just want to thank Mr. Stowers and Mr. Lowe for your work on this. I think it's no secret that I have been an advocate of community center. I would love to see more than one community center in the future. I'd love to see a public pool. Um, I have big ambitions for us and, um, so any funding help we can get through grants and otherwise are much appreciated. And so I just want to thank you and I can't wait to see what this looks like when it's all complete.
Further comments or discussion or questions? Ms. Young?
So as it's been said, that building has been empty a very long time in our community.
Too long.
Too long. Um, and, and as my councilwoman said, thank you to Alan Lowe and to Robert Stowers, who really, when he came here, he really moved that phone. But, but, but know that folks in the community have been concerned. And one of the things, and I will say, one of the things that I'm concerned about and I wanted to see is this not just be a building with rooms. We needed to have the best community center in South Norwalk. And, and hopefully that is what we get and that's what we're pushing for. Um, we need a state-of-the-art community center that everyone is able to attend. And I think that's what we're going to strive for. And so I'm happy to see this moving forward. I think you said twenty twenty-six? It might be done, it's a little too long, I'm waiting, but it's coming. Um, um, and we're just excited about what this opportunity is going to bring for the community.
Mr. Wiggins?
Um, I think this, once again, this is in my district. Um, I can see it out my window. I think it's extremely important, um, to have a community center. Um, what I'm looking for is it to be inclusive. Um, you know, when, when we think about this, how can a community be involved in the process of not only how it looks, but also, um, who's working there? How can we get the community to be a part of that? Um, it's imperative that we, you know, we hire and we pick, um, the individuals that's going to be running this, um, from Norwalk, that's a part of this community, that's a long-time residence community. Um, when we, when we have projects like this, um, you know, the people that's from the community are, um, the kids and the, the young people is more welcoming to faces they know. So I hope we, we can kind of push for that and, you know, keep that in our minds when we're developing this project.
Thank you. Further comment or discussion? Mr. Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, I'd like to continue the accolades to, um, uh, Alan Lowe and to, uh, Robert Stowers, especially Mr. Stowers. Because, uh, when he first came to Norwalk, one of the first things that he pointed out is that we did not have a community center. And, and, and he has the, the experience and the expertise and also the vision to make this happen. And he, he has seen the results of it, how it can be transformative to a community to have a vibrant, um, recreation center. So, um, I want to further, again, bring accolades to Mr. Stowers for, um, you know, shepherding this work and, um, greatly looking forward to put shovels in the ground as we have done on several projects across the city, but this will be a highlighted one when we see the work starting for this recreation center.
Ms. Smith?
Yes, I'd just like to, would just like to add my thanks to, uh, Alan Lowe and to Robert Stowers. Um, I made my comments, um, and thanked them so much during the Land Use and Building Management Committee. Um, and I can't say it better than has already been said here, but I do just want to add my accolades.
Further, Mr. Seed?
Yeah, I just want to, just tie along with the accolades. Um, it's really exciting. Um, I mean, it goes back to a long, long time ago when I was a kid. Um, people were complaining about, like, the kids don't have anything to do. Um, so this is really going to be, um, exciting, uh, for the people in South Norwalk, um, but people in Norwalk altogether, um, because the kids should have something to do. I also do hope that we do allow, uh, certain organizations that have been utilizing that space for like, things like Thanksgiving and Christmas, to continue to utilize those spaces. Um, because that is already a beacon of hope, um, in that community, um, even when it be an empty most of the year. Um, so, um, this is really exciting and kudos to everybody involved.
Further comment, discussion or questions? Mr. Frayer?
I just want to make one comment as well as that, uh, when I joined the BET back in twenty seventeen, this was an item that was continually coming up. And it, uh, was always, we were always very enthusiastic about it, but, uh, then we'd lose sight of the, the, uh, light at the end of the tunnel. Um, so it's really gratifying to, uh, to be here now and be able to cast a vote, go in the right direction. That, uh, finally looks like we're, we spend a little bit more money, but, um, it looks like we're going to have something that we can all be proud of.
Further comments, discussion or question? Uh, seeing none, uh, I agree, this is a long time coming. As Ms. Young mentioned, this building has been empty for way too long. It's a building that's situated in a location that can help so many people. Easy access, it's on the bus line, and it's incumbent upon us to make sure that that building is done in the right way to make sure that it serves the community in the way that it should be serving. Give the activities to young people, have the resources for the entire community and make sure that it operates in, uh, in a, in a, in a good way. So, and again, thank you to Alan Lowe and Mr. Stowers for spearheading this project. Uh, it's been a long time coming. And as I said, this, our group, uh, we work and we work hard and we get things done. So, uh, seeing no further questions or discussions, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. This is exciting. Thank you. Uh, Ms. Smith, I think we're at nine A and nine B?
Yes, we are. Thank you, Mayor. Authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to execute an agreement with VAD Construction Corporation for the Animal Control Facility Improvement Project for total not to exceed two hundred forty-eight thousand, eight hundred ninety-two dollars and fifty cents. Funds available from account noted. And nine B, authorize the Office of Building Management to issue change orders on the contract for total not to exceed twenty-four thousand, eight hundred eighty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents. Funds are available from account number noted. And I would like to move those items and also speak to them-
You have the floor.
If I may. So the, uh, Animal Control Facility, um, has received an extraordinary private gift of three, three hundred thirty-one thousand, seven hundred forty-one dollars. Uh, and that is, um, what they will be using, uh, these funds for. And we have Chief, uh, James Walsh here, uh, to, uh, discuss the project. Give us a little, uh, view of what the needs were at the, um, Animal Control Facility and, um, the work that you'll be doing. And thank you so much for joining us, Chief.
Chief Walsh?
Thank you, Mayor Rilling, uh, common council mayor. Good evening. Yes, in the February two thousand twenty-three, we received a very generous donation from the estate of Donna Gale in the amount of three hundred thirty-one thousand dollars for the sole purpose of renovation for the care and upkeep of, uh, the animal shelter. She was a, uh, a steadfast animal lover, uh, in, uh, dealing, speaking with her attorney, she was, uh, quite intent on having the money spent for the renovations. So in working with building management, uh, there were several highlights that needed to be improved in that building. Uh, renovations included a new roof, gutters, accessories, a door on the south side of the building, LED lighting in the dog kennel, painting of the kennel walls and floors with epoxy, a kitchenette for staff, hot and cold water faucet on the front and rear sides of the building, garage doors on the exterior kennels, acoustic panels on kennel walls for noise reduction and HVAC equipment, boilers and air handlers, a replacement for the office space. One of the most, uh, essential parts of this renovation is the rear of the building. We're actually adding, uh, an extension to garage doors and fencing to allow the dogs that are stored there more room to run around and get them some sunshine. And they actually have an access way and it provides a little bit better of, uh, quality while their, their stay is there. It did go through the RFP process and VAD Construction Company, uh, was the low bidder at two hundred forty-eight thousand, eight hundred ninety-two dollars and fifty cents.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, are there any questions for Chief Walsh or, uh, Mr. Lowe or anybody else or comments? Ms. Nagilsey Eichner?
I just wanted to briefly comment, um, and, uh, thank, uh, our donor. It really is extraordinary to see the city be the recipient of such a large gift. Um, and I really am grateful for someone who saw the need and stepped up, um, and is really, um, contributing to our, to our community in such a way. And so I think it's really important to acknowledge, um, what a, again, what an incredibly generous gift that was for us to receive.
Further comments, questions, discussion? Okay, seeing done, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions?
All in favor, I'm sorry, wait.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. I believe that brings us to item, uh, seven E one, Mr. Goldstein, I believe?
Yes, um, it was E one, authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to execute a contract with Rough Edge Collective Inc. for the completion of the Monroe Street Underpass mural in an amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollar, uh, fifty thousand dollars, account numbers noted. I'd like to move into, I'm going to speak to it very briefly.
You have the floor.
Um, so just to give a little context, and I know this, uh, came up in the committee meeting we had on this last week. Uh, this is an expenditure that was approved in the capital budget. Um, it's part of the, uh, Art in Public Places Program. Um, this was, uh, this, the artists, uh, in Rough Edge Collective Inc., it's, uh, two artists. Um, their names are MJ, uh, Lindo and Josh Lindo Lawyer. Um, were selected by the Norwalk Arts and Cultural Commission. Uh, with us tonight are, uh, Sabrina, uh, Sabrina Gadesky, our Director of Business and Developments Tourism, uh, and Brian Katz, we're the Chair of the Arts and Cultural Commission to answer any questions anyone has.
Any further comment or discussion or questions? I think it's, by the way, it's going to look beautiful.
Yeah.
Going to really dress up, uh, the Monroe Street Underpass.
Absolutely. And that's, and that's the, the designs are actually impacting their, their, the, the, the perspective design. Actually, it looks really beautiful. And I know that there's, um, an effort to, um, continue to be working with the community on that design. Hopefully there will be some, uh, community input component to that as well.
Comments or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? So we have two opposed, Ms. Young and Ms. Stowers. Motion carries? I believe now that brings us to seven G, Community Services, Ms. Ayers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, G one, authorize the mayor, Harry W. Rilling, to execute any and all agreements, documents, instruments or amendments as may be necessary to extend contract for one additional year with Norwalk Act located at Neymont Avenue, Norwalk, Connecticut, oh, six, eight, five, zero, for the Norwalk Workforce Development Strategy Initiative with Community Service Department for a total amount of a hundred thousand dollars, account noted. I'd like to move it and speak to it, Mr. Mayor.
You have the floor, Ms. Ayers.
Thank you. Um, it is, um, a good place when we are able to extend contracts with local nonprofits that are seeking to address areas of great concern for all Norwalkers. And that is in the, um, area of workforce development. This is a limited contract because we're only extending it for one time, but Norwalk Act has really used this money that has been allocated for them to do this work and has done a marvelous work. And we should acknowledge the efforts that Norwalk Act has, uh, made in, um, establishing as well as promoting workforce development in the city of Norwalk. Here with us tonight, we do have our Chief of Community Service, Mr. Daniels, as well as a representative from Norwalk Act that will speak and answer any questions if the committee has any. Mr. Daniels?
Good evening, everyone. Uh, thank you, uh, councilperson Nicole, my chair for the committee. Um, just by way through the president, let me just introduce myself. I purposely wanted to be here in person, so then after this, you'll see me through the box. Uh, but it was important for me to be here today to introduce myself. I serve as your Chief of Community Services for our great city, Norwalk. Uh, in that capacity, I oversee the Health Department. Indiana DeMore is our Health Director. Uh, the Human Services Department, Anna Vivian Estrella, is our Human Services Director and our Great Library System led by Director Sherrell Harris. led by Director Sherrell Harris. Um, and by uh, and so thank you, and I've also, and this will be, I'm in my fifth year here. So uh, thank you for letting me serve our residents. So as Council indicated, uh, this strategy was designed under President uh, Biden's uh, workforce development strategy through ARPA funding usage. And last year, uh, I think it's important to note that in Norwalk, while we're kind of using these language post pandemic, post pandemic, you know, in our, in our departments, what we observe that there are still a lot of residents that haven't bounced back. And so we know how do you get residents connected and, and working and, and contribute to society, and that's, they need a good job. But not just a good job, and you'll hear Jesse, I'm gonna turn it over to him, he's our lead partner, he's the expert, not me. But you know, you'll hear Jesse talk about a livable wage job. And this funding is exactly what we intended to do. It's a private-public partnership. And I think it's important as you all, as we move to extending the contract, uh, the city has the ability to help jumpstart initiatives. And sometime we need to use city money to get things going. But as Council uh, Nicole Ayers mentioned, that since year two, uh, Norwalk Act has been able to expand, and I think in your package, you'll see that they have taken the leadership to build sustainability, because this, I want to make it clear, this is a one-time investment. But you can see where through our investment, they've been able to leverage uh, additional dollars. And this is a citywide initiative, it's not per organization. It's looking at how can we ensure Norwalkers have the resources to training? And then I'll close by saying this, and I'll let Jesse speak. Um, you know, part of this strategy that many of you, the new councilpersons don't know, one of the things that we, we really, with Mayor Will and support is workforce development is huge to our region. And if you all know, many of you have been here, workplace is no longer here in, in, in uh, Norwalk. And so through our strong advocacy and the department, uh, part of this long continuing work is that workplace now is here in, in this, in City Hall. They also hold office hours because it's important that, you know, we don't want our, our residents traveling to Bridgeport, and nothing against Bridgeport, uh, and Stanford. So this is about a continuum of activities. This what before you is to extend the contract, uh, so that Norwalk Act can continue to look at and help us look at it from a broad perspective. Uh, we don't have the capacity, which is why these grants and these resources are important to rely on our partners to build a sustainability. And if I may ask Jesse to kind of speak to, because of these cities' investments, I would like to, Jesse to share, these are the things that have been happening. We welcome Jesse, Deputy Director of Norwalk Act. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Lamont. Uh, thank you, Mayor Rilling, and thank you to our common council uh, for your support in our workforce development partnership with the city of Norwalk. So my name's Jesse Bucklo, I'm the Deputy Director for Norwalk Act. I'm also proud to be serving and working in the community that I was born, uh, raised and currently live in. So we're facing a challenge here in Norwalk as it relates to workforce development. Uh, nearly half our workforce, uh, forty-eight percent are employed in the jobs that are making less than forty-two thousand dollars, which is the minimum wage based on the cost of living to afford basic needs here in Norwalk. Each year for the last five years, two hundred twenty students, which is thirty percent of Norwalk Public School graduates, graduate and they don't go to college. Um, and that's where we lose them in the data of are, are they getting livable wage employment career pathways here in Norwalk? Of that two hundred twenty student, or two hundred twenty students, eighty percent of those students are students of color. So this is kind of a need of ish of equity, um, and the need to support the students and getting them into career pathways. So, we're facing a big challenge. Uh, but our partnership with the city of Norwalk over the past year and a half has been incredibly successful. Uh, the city of Norwalk, Norwalk Public Schools, Norwalk Community College, nonprofits, many that are here, the Norwalk Chamber and our local business community are all connected to workforce development, but they've never been brought together in this way over the past year to tackle this challenge. A year and a half ago, the city's investment allowed us to hire a workforce development coordinator who has truly hit the ground running. So I'm gonna share a little bit about the highlights of our past year and a half, and then just talk about where our work is going. So the, the role of this coordinator is really to strengthen connection, collaboration and alignment between all the organizations that are focused on workforce development in Norwalk. Over the last year, we've launched a Norwalk Workforce Development Committee that has had over fifty participants at each of our quarterly meetings, representing various organizations both here in Norwalk, our region as well as our state. Um, we've also had the opportunity to have a platform for Norwalkers to get connected to what's going on in the region, the state, through these quarterly meetings. We've launched a citywide workforce development newsletter that's had nine, or I think it, sorry, yeah, nine monthly newsletters so far. We've shared over a hundred and ten resources about what is going on in Norwalk as it relates to workforce development. A big piece that I want to kind of highlight in the challenge is that there's a lot of good things happening here in Norwalk, but they've been siloed and disconnected and fragmented. So a big part of our work is about centralizing the efforts and coordinating them to make sure that we're getting into everyone at the same time. Uh, one of our strongest resources that we released over the past year is an in- interactive resource dashboard for case managers to work with residents and finding workforce development opportunities. Uh, it's on our website, you can take a look at it, it's, well, it's linked in the proposal that we've shared. Over fifty programs are available to Norwalk residents right now, and the dashboard's been viewed over seven hundred times. And we've trained various organizations on how to use it, specifically the case managers, so they can work and use it with their clients. So many of the, of those organizations, their full departments are using it. Now, when a resident comes to the community re- uh, to the Community Resource Hub, and they have identified a need as workforce development or employment, our Community Resource Specialists or Family Navigators, I okay, um, now have an interactive dashboard that they can use to point folks in the right direction. The other piece that I would like to highlight is we spearheaded a Norwalk Job Board in partnership with the Greater Norwalk Chamber. It's on their website right now. And it's focused specifically on positions that don't require a two or four-year degree. It's a localized job board, and in January twenty twenty-four, we plan to do an aggressive marking, a marketing campaign to get over a hundred jobs on it. So that's in the works right now. Um, so with that being said, I'd just like to kind of close that Norwalk is now poised for new investments in workforce development based on the infrastructure we've created. And because of the investment and the partnership uh, that's come from the city, Norwalk has now become a model for workforce development and collaboration in the state, because this has never been done before in this way. And so we're now at a turning point where there's more opportunities for Norwalkers and they continue to grow. And this year two funding will allow us to manage the additional capacity that's needed to continue to shape and amplify our workforce strategy. Um, so some of the things that we'll be focusing on is a large citywide marketing campaign and communications campaign to continue to get information to the high-needs populations in Norwalk. And another focus of our work is really to focus on, focus on finding funding opportunities for Norwalk organizations to tap into both at the region and the state. Traditionally, Norwalk hasn't been tapped into those, and that's why Stanford and Bridgeport, many of those services that exist uh, for workforce development, Norwalkers have to travel elsewhere. And so our focus is really on trying to create funding opportunities, um, especially collaborative funding opportunities to make sure our organizations that are serving Norwalk residents are getting connected to them, and we can continue to amplify services for all our residents. So I'll, I'll, I'll pause there and give it back to Lamont.
Well, seeing what you don't see in your packet is the many organizations that Jesse referenced. If we were actually to tally what this one hundred dollars that I'm asking you all to approve tonight, the contract, that it's about more than about almost close to half a million dollars in terms of Norwalk Chambers, services and resources, and we have the Community College at the table. I think lastly, um, we're just really excited to be in this position. Um, this is about systems and infrastructure, so this is not about funding programs. It doesn't mean that's not important, but we were very intentional, we need to look at the system. Because you have these great programs, but this, if the system is fragmented, as Jesse pointed out, you'll have these different silos. So this investment from the city was intentional, looking around systems and policies and practices as it relates to uh, workforce development. And then as Jesse noted, we will be encouraging them and inspiring them to, once we can get the system intact, let's look at programming so we can support the programs uh, to get our Norwalkers up and ready uh, to work. So thank you for that, and we'll, um, I'm available obviously for questions, and if you have specific questions for Jesse, I'll bring him back up here, he can help me answer some of the specificity of, of the work that they've been doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments? Mr. Wiggins?
Um, I want to echo what Nicole said about, you know, the work that Norwalk Act is doing. Um, great work, uh, you know, I personally worked alongside a few of them, um, when it comes to the workforce development, I think um, it's, it's important and, you know, the things that we're we're trying to accomplish in Norwalk when it comes to workforce development is important. Um, but I, I do want to um, talk about the process of which, which these funds are um, being allocated. Um, last year was, it was, it was, it was also questioned how the funds was being allocated. Um, last year, I, I believe twenty-three organizations received ARPA funds. Um, and my thing is inclusiveness, like how can we be as a council, as a community, um, be more inclusive when it comes to, you know, dispersing funds um, in, in the city of Norwalk? Uh, it's important to me because when you look at the twenty-three organizations that received the funds, about two of the organizations, and I say about for a reason, um, are black and brown-led organizations. Um, uh, Chief talked about, you know, you know, the importance of systems. I think, you know, funding systems is important, but, you know, programs is equally important, because when you look at programs, these are individuals dealing directly with the individuals that's, that's hurting and, you know, suffering from the things that's happening um, in these communities. So, you know, you know, that's the only thing I'm really disagree with him on. Um, but before you came, we had two individuals from the community speak to the process of which funds is distributed, because, you know, um, if I'm not mistaken, these are two of the or- two organizations that haven't received um, any of these funds. Once again, I want you to be, I want to be clear. Out of twenty-three, um, I would say one, but one and a half organizations, you know, there was people of color, whether black or um, Hispanic leadership, which means out of two million dollars that was, that was spent um, with the ARPA funds, about a hundred thousand went to uh, black and brown leadership. So I want to, I, I think it's important for us to note that and continue to, I, I, I'm gonna continue to fight for you, you organizations out here that's smaller, that don't get their just doing, doing a good work, because I know the work that you guys are doing. And I don't want to, um, you know, um, just kind of like continue to push that to the side when we, when we talking about other organizations that build the systems or whatever they, whatever else they're doing. Um, so with that being said, you know, the question is for me, Chief, is going forward, because I, once again, I do think it's important for us to, you know, um, have this workforce development, but going forward, it was, you know, said last year that organizations would have an opportunity to apply. Um, and I don't, I don't know if Norwalk Act would apply, or if it was a system to where, you know, organizations can apply, but how would that look going forward um, for these organizations? Um, like, I wish it was here when they spoke, but um, that could apply for these funds, you know, that's, that's typically dealing with black and brown students.
Sure, I'll be happy to respond. Um, I just want to bring to your attention, if you recall, that from the ARPA, Norwalk had, for the very first time, launched our Norwalk Mini Grant Program. It was specifically designed to support the smaller organizations so that they can start engaging and receiving grants for the city of Norwalk. Um, this happened, this predates you. Um, and I don't have the makeup of the demographics, but I feel very confident that what we, if we were to do uh, us, analysis on the, you know, who receive them, I think I will feel very proud that we addressed the specific need. Um, and, and I have the list, but I don't know if it's appropriate to share them, but they're ver- in my opinion, they are very uh, grassroots, smaller nonprofits, which was designed. I think, you know, in terms of the ARPA, that's something we're still figuring out, so I'm not prepared to speak that, because I didn't know I was going to be asked that. But I can assure you, I've been here for five years. We were responsive in the Norwalk Mini Grant Program was directly a response. And for those that are watching, I remind folks that we publicize in the Norwalk Hour. We also publicize in our state, our, our city's Facebook and media, uh, social media, and I'm definitely open to entertain it. There's other ways that we can promote and advertise these opportunities when allowed. I'm open to, you know, learn to see if there's other places that we can promote these funding opportunities, because they were publicized in that manner.
So, so just, just, because I don't feel like my answer was qu- um, my question was answered. Um, I, I'm, I'm very aware of the mini-grants. The mini-grants was uh, the, the maximum ten thousand, um, ten thousand dollars, and, and we know when, when dealing with nonprofit organizations, dealing with black and brown communities, you know, ten thousand dollars would get you but so far, right? So the reason why, the reason why I'm, I'm highlighting ARPA, because you know, you have organizations getting, you know, hundreds of thousand, you know, some, some, some life changing money to kind of like work on these initiatives. And the question was specifically the process going forward, because last year it was said that, you know, it would, it would be two rounds of funding that you could be able to apply, but it wasn't guaranteed. Um, not the same organizations that received it last year, but it's, it's a process um, that, you know, once again, I was promised last year that you'll be able to apply. So you know, going forward with this ARPA funds would, you know, individuals that run in organizations, or organizations rather, be able to apply for this ARPA like it was um, done last year?
Well, again, um, Councilman Wing is, I am not prepared to speak on that, because I didn't, that, that's not what I was prepared to do. But I'm most certainly open to entertaining your concerns as always and to speak to this. And we are looking at um, how we're going to restructure and look at the ARPA program, but I'm not prepared to address that, because I, I, I didn't know that was a question to that I needed to be prepared for.
Ms. Smith, I think you had your hand up.
Oh, yeah, I just, um, I, I, you know, on a different note, um, I wanted to, uh, Lamont, thank you for your presentation, and, and Jesse, thank you so much for um, the information you gave us uh, here tonight. The uh, workforce development, when, when you first launched this, I can't even tell you how happy I felt because of, you know, uh, teaching in our schools and middle school and high school. Uh, the, the incredible focus on college, 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 you know, and being there with the kids. Not everyone's meant to go to college, right? And not, everyone wants to go to college, and we need a path for those kids, and they need that support. And so the work that Norwalk Act has done, you know, your cradle to career approach and commitment and the data that you uh, that you use and share with Norwalk Public Schools. I mean, I just have so much respect for your organization, and I thank you so much for the work that you're doing.
Ms. Ayers?
Thank you. Um, just to support what my colleague has said, but also give a different perspective. I think it's important for all of us to understand ARPA is limited funding. Um, ARPA is issued by the federal government, and after it's gone, it's gone. It's not uh, endless pool of funding that we could consistently dip in. And I think we need to be very mindful not to tie ourselves to the ARPA funding. There are possibly other funding that will be longstanding. Um, one that just popped in my mind is what we're gonna do with cannabis, where we can possibly find resources to allocate to smaller organizations. But this council has to do that work. And I understand when we see large price tags, it is normal to question and ask, but ARPA is limited funding, whereas something um, such as the cannabis and the sale of cannabis and those taxes that the city will get back is something that's going to consistently happen, that we may be able as elected officials to have a little bit more diversity in who we fund. So I do want to acknowledge in um, acknowledge that those persons that have come into the gallery um, this evening, we have heard them, but I don't want us to get bogged down with ARPA, because it's gone. Like, we, we have allocated all of ARPA. There's no more money for ARPA, but there are other funding streams that we may need to be spending some time to make sure they are allocated in a different manner.
I think Ms. Dunn, I think you had your hand up.
Hi, I'm kind of new here. I just want to say how much, just take this opportunity that I respect you enormously um, throughout COVID. You know, I co- I come to, I'm in your Friday morning meetings. That if you guys haven't attended or viewed, they're incredible, the amount of organization that you've done and what you've done to change the quality of life for Norwalkers. Uh, you know, I work with, I'm in recovery for the, not, I'm not in gra- I have the recovery supervisor for the Red Cross for Connecticut. So when we have families or like whole- I have the recovery supervisor for the Red Cross for Connecticut. So when we have families or like whole communities that are burned out, it's been so helpful to me to say, gosh, this family needs, you know, help with fair rent or something, and I know exactly who to send them to. And this family needs clothing or food, and you've really pulled together amazing people that are so impressive and able to help people, and it's, you're amazing. I'm a big fan. Sorry. Thank you.
Further comment, Mr. Seed and then Mr. Frayer.
I just want to just speak, um, I'm in favor of the work that you guys are doing, and especially with uh with Norwalk Acts. Um, but I think what we heard uh from um speakers is that on these smaller organizations, they need help, and they feel trapped um because they try for these um applications and they don't get it. Um, so what I suggest is just uh maybe um get us some help. I know it was talked about last time with the ARPA funds, with uh maybe providing the funds with like grant writers and and different things like that, or training about that, but also just inclusiveness. Um, because that's that's something that we heard. Um, so I know that this might not be the conversation for this, but I think that's something that we have heard from the public today, um, and council members. And I think that that should just be something that we strive for going forward. I'm in the process, and I know that um the mini-grant was a direct recipient of that, um, but definitely just keep working for inclusiveness and help these small organizations uh that do need assistance so that they can become bigger organizations um in the future, because they are doing great work for our our kids.
Thank you. Mr. Frayer?
Yes, I just wanted to follow up on on what my colleague, uh, Ms. Ayers had say that that ARPA money is not going to be there forever. Um, having said that, though, I'm very, very impressed with, I read all the material in the packet the other day. Um, but I'm also very, very impressed with with what Jesse Bucklow just mentioned about uh the synergy that he's building with all the other uh uh different uh organizations. Uh, and also to get their participation. I think that's where the where the answer is going to, where the money is going to come from. We get uh different corporations and different organizations that are going to be able to contribute that. That's going to make up where our next ARPA money is going to come from. So I I I fully applaud what what you guys are doing. You're doing a great job, and just keep it up.
Mr. Jelski, Iker?
Thank you, Ms. Ma. And just very briefly, um, I actually used to work with um Strive Together Cities in um New York, and I really want to applaud, I think the model is a terrific one. I'm very grateful for the work Norwalk Acts is doing. Um, and I think that there's a sense in which um Norwalk Acts is here to help with a lot of the issues being raised by some of the smaller nonprofits. The goal of a Strive Together model is to figure out where everyone's piece of the puzzle fits together and so that there's not duplication, there's not overlap, rather, it's synergy moving everyone forward. And I know that Norwalk Acts has really been engaged in this work, um, and I hope that that will continue that, you know, as um we are sort of considering how to support our smaller nonprofits, that there is a goal of making sure that the puzzle pieces are fitting together, that everyone's great work is being leveraged and highlighted and figured out how the specialties that, you know, that a smaller nonprofit brings can then help fill in gaps on where this is. And this is that we're offering our students and our families a complete system that meets everyone's needs. I think that's the real opportunity of this entire model and the real chance to make sure that all of us are working together and leveraging everyone's specific talents and, you know, networks and neighborhood connections, right? That value is the thing that we need. And so I really want to emphasize that there is great value in funding the coordination work, because it is in doing so that we raise everyone together. That's the entire point of the model. And I've I've had an opportunity to see how incredibly successfully it can work in cities that um have really struggled. And when you see a high school that is literally basically surrounded by a whole plethora of organizations, you know, the actual, you know, employers coordinating with the, you know, specialists in the community on training on that particular subject, and the specialists, you know, nonprofits that do the mental health support, and the specialist tours, and they're all coming together so that literally the entire network is wrapping around those kids and boosting them into the future they want. That's what we're working towards, and I think it's really incredible that we've started that process here. I'm so excited to see it play out. So excited to sort of have this coordinating function. You know, again, bring up the special skills that our our smaller nonprofits offer as well.
Mr. Goldstein, then Ms. Smith?
Uh, I just, I couldn't agree with what uh Councilmember Jaski Iker said, but I also want to seize upon, I think, an interesting point raised sort of jointly by Councilmember Ayers and Councilmember Seed about where other funding opportunities for smaller nonprofits emerge. And I think um notably, of course, one of those is the um municipal sales tax toll of merge from retail cannabis sales. And I know that's something Chief Daniels, you're working on, are the guidelines of how nonprofits and others can apply for uh those funds. And I think an interesting opportunity here, and I think this is something that Councilmember uh Seed gave me to see. But 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 in all seriousness, for me to say, yeah, just uh just to say um that perhaps um applications for funds like this can be an opportunity, or there can be some sort of programming to help um newer or 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 nonprofits that are less experienced in the grant application and and grant process um to give them that opportunity. So I think that that's something, I know that's something you're working.
Yeah, if I could just quickly, I mean, I don't want to belabor, I know we all want to go, I know I'm one of them. And but I would, I think I'll just say, I would welcome anyone an opportunity to come to us and talk, because we actually did do that. For example, anyone who applied for the Norwalk Mini Grant, our partner right here in Norwalk, Fairfield County's Community Foundation offered free technical assistance to write the grant. So that did happen. Uh, we also went through the relationship with Norwalk Acts, the uh Technical Assistance Services. I think, you know, and I do believe there's always room for improvement, is how do we get the word out? And that's just a challenge, I think, everyone, how do you market this stuff to everyone? It gets to certain people. And now I think my takeaway is just trying to figure out, how can we ensure that when we launch initiatives and programs, all organizations um get connected in here? Because that's an emerging resource, and it can cost like ten, twenty thousand dollars. But because of our partnership, they actually will, they actually reviewed those who took advantage of it to review the grant. They provided an individual to walk you through it. I wish more of the organizations took advantage of it. Uh, but that's something that we have partnerships, and to your point, Councilmember Smith, we initiated, and it was very successful. But we definitely would love to do it more and more and more and encourage organizations to take advantage of this free resource, because they're willing to provide that service.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Ms. Smith?
Yeah, essentially, that was what I was going to bring up, is that, you know, uh, after the the first um distribution of of ARPA funds, when these questions were coming up, um, that that was a program that was set up uh in response to those questions. And I also know that Norwalk Acts uh stepped up and did some outreach and uh and was doing some work to um bring in the smaller nonprofits and give them some help around that grant writing. So um and and just a Strive Together model, Nora, online. It's just incredible, the work that um that can be done. Yeah, it really is.
Mr. Burnett?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just bringing the discussion back to the motion that's in front of us. Um, this this item indicates that we're extending the contract for one additional year.
Correct.
And the ten thousand dollars is a one-time.
Not ten.
Hundred thousand.
Yes, you need to catch that. That's a hundred. No, it's a hundred, it's not ten.
Correction. Is is a one-time.
Yes, sir.
What's the plan beyond this?
Well, as as noted in the documentation, you can see where, again, this is where the public and private partnership is critical. Because I see our investments is sometimes we are the jumpstart to start the engine. And so this is for me, this is exactly what I would like to see. We're, we can support you, but we'll jumpstart the engine, but you got to pay for the gas long term. And for us, why I'm asking your support, you can see that Norwalk Acts has eloquently displayed, they're moving in that direction. They're finding the gas money to keep the car moving, as in in your, in your literature, in your documents, you see where they've been finding additional funding beyond the hundred thousand to sustain that, and that's exactly what we want to see. So this is, this is definitely a one-time funding allocation. It's no more ARPA activists.
Mr. Wiggins?
Last comment, I know I'm kind of like a broken record, but, you know, to Ms. Ayers' point, um, this ARPA money is going to run out, and and like, we know that it's it's really, it's a temporary thing, but just how we kind of like jumpstart and, you know, uh, Norwalk Acts was just was still a small organization, but on a, you know, a bigger budget than probably the organizations that's in the in the office, I mean, in the in the audience. But um I just want to hit on and just kind of like continue to push. To me, it's about equity, equity practices. Um, you know, who's a part of, you know, you know, putting the funds out there? Is it, you know, like, making sure that the end of it is not, it's not, no. The last time we talked about this, it was, it was, we talked about a explicit bias and and all of these things. So when I, you know, love the work that you're doing, obviously love the work that you're doing, uh, Jesse at Norwalk Acts, being a part of it is is great, but the process is the problem, and I think that's kind of what I'm hitting on. When it comes, when we talk about the cannabis, you know, money, like, that's, it's happening in Stanford already. Um, and, you know, with United Way and all these other uh different organizations coming together and dispersing that that those funds, and specifically is for those areas that's hit on the war on drugs. So, you know, when that money do start rolling in and other funds start rolling in, I think that's a state thing. So I don't even know how how that would even work with us as a council, but um how can we just make sure the process is equitable and, you know, the or the communities that's hard hit by the issues that we talk about um is receiving the funds in the the black and brown leadership um of these communities is, you know, heading this, these initiatives. The reason why, because they're stakeholders in their community. They live in these communities. They got to walk past these kids every day or, you know, families every day. You know, it's extremely important that we support and we um we fund, you know, black and brown leadership in our communities.
Further comment or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? opposed, extensions, motion carries, Ms. Shanahan?
Thank you so much. Have a good evening, everyone.
Ms. Shanahan?
I'm ready. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Ms. Shanahan. Time is approximately nine eighteen. All in favor? Opposed, extensions, we are adjourned at nine eighteen. Thank you all for your time and all the hard work.